Good evening to you all and welcome to the August 18th, 2020 Regular Council Meeting. Thank you for honoring the town's stipulation that you wear a mask and almost by the seating arrangements, I think you're having to social distance, so thank you for your cooperation in doing that. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I will begin by asking the clerk to call the roll if she will.
Mayor Marshburn?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Vance?
Here. Thank you very much. We will now ask Councilmember Singleton to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance, and he will also lead us with the invocation. You will please stand if you can.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
If you would like to join me in prayer. Father, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to gather this evening and talk about important business for our town and our community. Father, we want to lift up those who are struggling and suffering from the coronavirus in our state and our country and around the world. As you please try to put your healing hand on these people and their families, those who are separated and cannot be close to family while they're fighting this illness. We'll lift up those who are fighting other illnesses and disease, heart disease, cancer, as it should you help and be with these people also as they go through surgeries and treatments. Father, we lift up the men and women of our military, located in military installations around the world, as it should be with these men and women and also be with their families as they try to protect the rights and freedoms of our country and the countries in which they serve. Be with this council, be with the staff and those members of the audience tonight as we discuss these issues. The decisions we make could be the best for our community for years and years to come. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Singleton. With the council's permission, I'm going to move items around just a little bit at the first of our agenda this evening, and we're going to go to presentations. For those of you who may not know, we have a very, very special guest with us here this evening, and we have some presentation that we want to make. So to do this, I'm going to ask Mr. Jimmy Stevens and Mr. Buck Kennedy to join me over next to this podium over here, and they're going to assist in this presentation this evening. Okay? I'll join you down there, gentlemen. It's my great pleasure as mayor to make a presentation this evening to a very special person, and this is the this year's recipient of the James R. Stevens Service Award. It's an award that's given annually to an individual who is selected by a nominating committee, of whom the mayor is one, and others. But just to give you a little background information, this award has been in existence since 1988, and it is known as our town's most prestigious public service award. It's bestowed on a person who has made outstanding contributions to Garner over a substantial period of years, with preference given to nominees with 20-plus years of community service. And this is in keeping with the James Stevens tradition of service that spans decades. The award is chosen by a committee made up of the Stevens family member, the current president of the Chamber of Commerce, and the past recipient of the award, the mayor, and a handful of members of the community. So to assist me this evening, I'm going to recognize Mr. Jimmy Stevens, who will be representing the Stevens family, and also Mr. Buck Kennedy, who is no stranger to any of you, who is the most recent past recipient of the award. So, Mr. Stevens, if you will come along first, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thirty-two years ago, before you were born, I think, we celebrated my father's 60th birthday. And the way we celebrated that birthday was by establishing the James R. Stevens Service to Garner Award. And to be honest with you, I had no idea that it would last so long, that it would honor so many wonderful, community-minded people that are so unselfish and love Garner just like my father did. And certainly, Neil, you fall into that category, and I know that if Daddy could be here tonight, he would be beaming that you received this award, because you are just the epitome of what it was designed to be. Very briefly, I want to say one thing about Neil. I know Neil has done a tremendous amount for a long period of time for the town of Garner, and probably is best known for his service with the Chamber and with his active participation and such strong support for Broadway Voices, which is a treasure in this community, and I want to thank him for that. But when I think of Neil personally, what I think of is Sunday mornings, because Neil has played the organ in our church for close to 30 years, I think. And there's times before the service starts that Neil is playing the organ, and it's a time of meditation, a time of quiet reflection. And there have been so many times, Neil, that I've heard that still, small voice speak to me, "Through your music." What greater contribution can a person give to this fellow man? And I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for your love of Garner, and I want to, on behalf of the Stevens family, congratulate you on this honor. Thank you.
Sir Buck Kennedy, as I said, needs no introduction, but he was kind enough to be here this evening. Buck was on the nominating committee, and he will share information about Neil and about the process. And so Buck, we welcome you back, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
You have 15 minutes? No.
I've got the material. Thank you, Mayor, Council, for allowing me to be here tonight to be a part of the presentation and recognition for Neil as the James R. Stevens Service to Garner Award. I think most of you, if you know anything about Neil, he wears a lot of hats. I don't know where he stores all of them, but he has a lot of hats. He's a promoter, he's an entertainer, he's a visionary, he has a great imagination, he's great with logistics, he's excellent with his talent as an organist, plays piano as He has a high degree of determination, and there's one thing that he really has. You know, you'd think he has really no energy at all, the way he conducts business, but he really is the epitome of a high-energy energizer bunny. Well, he's just as comfortable in front of the lights as he is behind the scenes. Generally, Neil, quite frankly, is not a high-profile person. He's, as I say, he just assumed being in the background and push other people forward, help them present themselves in the most positive light, and one of the high-profile things is how many Miss Garner pageant winners has he helped promote in taking it to the next level with the state pageant, and then even helping some of the Miss North Carolinas prepare for the national competition. Well, I first met Neil 30 years ago as the organist at Avisboro Road Baptist Church. Our new sanctuary was dedicated in 1990. We were the proud recipient of a gift, a nice gift of a grand organ. I'm not sure how to describe it, but it was a wonderful gift, and it was a very nice organ, and Neil has played it ever since. I will have to tell you that Jimmy talked about some of the quiet reflection times that he plays before the worship service starts. I like his majestic music. I mean, he plays with all 10 fingers and both feet. I watch his feet just as much as do his fingers, because he knows where the pedals are. Well, there's another thing, too. He can recognize when he's ready to finish, because he's leaning on it. He's leaning on that organ, and it builds up, and it builds up, and then when he's ready to stop, he pulls back, and he turns, and I've got to get an eyeball catch to him, give him the thumbs up, because I like it when he plays with both hands and both feet. Well, our next, that was 30 years ago. The next time we really came in contact with Neil was, at least I did, was when I joined the council in '03. Neil was before us on a number of occasions, talking about the town players, and then promoting that, and little did we recognize that what that relationship could be. But I recall at our first planning retreat, our facilitator went around the room and asked each council member, says, "Identify your number-one priority for Garner." Well, my number-one priority, and I was a Lone Ranger on this, it was too early for its time, was our image, to improve our image. I didn't know how to do it. We mentioned All-American City, and somebody says, "Well, that's a lot of work," and as it turned out, yes, it was, but the seed was planted. Then in '06, Neil became the president of the Chamber, high-profile with the town. Another little incident, we were giving the Chamber $5,000 a year. We wanted to bump it up to $15,000. Not a big change, but Chamber could do some promoting for us that we couldn't do for ourselves. Well, we tried to get it bumped up from 5 to 15. Somebody tells us, "You can't do that." But we want to. You can't do that. It was the first time I used a new math, like, 2 plus 1 equals 5. I said, "Well, what if I can get two more votes, and we vote to give them $15,000?" Well, I reckon you can, but you shouldn't. It was $15,000, and on we went. We didn't know at the time that what was ahead of us for the All-American City Award, and I didn't know how to do it, but somewhere along that line, the seed kept some germination. And as president, Neil, it became evident that there was a chemistry with the town through different organizations, whether it was Town Players, the GPAC, the Connect Conference, Broadway Voices, and how about the Economic Development Tour, where we started out with one bus, and then the next year automatically you had to hire two buses. It was putting Garner on the map. So even then, in 2013, he led Garner, he was part of the contingent that, and led the presentation to the award, it was an award-winning presentation for which we received the All-American City Award. When I look back on it, all of those things that Neil was doing behind the scenes and in front of the cameras, and quite literally, not just figuratively, but literally, Neil put the town of Garner on the map. If there's any one person over the last 20 years that had the most to do with changing Garner's image and improving it, changed it in a positive way, that was Neil Paget, and he is certainly deserving this year and proud to be a friend of Neil Paget, the 2020 James R. Stevens Service to Garner Award. Congratulations, Neil.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jimmy and Mr. Kennedy, for your kind comments. We're not quite finished, Neil. I want to, I know Neil has just participated in a virtual reception. We didn't give him our regular reception this year for obvious reasons, but I heard so many good comments about him, his life, what he's meant to this town, that it's rather amazing to listen to. And I want to give our council members, if they care to, a few moments, minutes, to make any comments to Neil or about Neil, so now would be a good time, council members, if you want to do that. I'll start with Mr. Matthews here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had the privilege and honor of knowing Neil for many years, and through the Chamber and different events, and as you mentioned, pageants when the kids were little and things going on, and you certainly are a go-getter, and so I don't know where you got all that energy from, but save a little bit for your retirement here, whatever that's going to be. But as a friend told me, he said, "When you retire, Phil, get all the rest you can before you retire, because once you retire, everybody thinks you don't have nothing to do." But a man of your caliber will stay busy. But congratulations, and I'm proud to call you my friend, and congratulations on this honor. Well deserved.
You know what's neat about Neil is Neil's a Garner guy. He's been here, went to school here, lived here. All these people say, "Oh, my gosh, Garner schools are bad." No, they're not, folks. Garner schools are great. Don't even worry about all that stuff. You've got great people. They went to school in Garner and did great things in Garner and other places, and Neil's one of those who did great things here in Garner and Wake County. And I think Mr. Stevens and Mr. Kennedy talked about his energy, and Neil never has lack for enthusiasm, let's be honest. He's got energy and enthusiasm, but it's well displayed, and it's done for the right reason. So congratulations, my friend. You're well deserved.
I attended Neil's virtual reception this afternoon and heard all the wonderful remarks made, and of course, agreed with all of them. And hearing the remarks made tonight, the thought that comes to mind is that if we heard it all 100 times over, it would never get old, because it's the truth. And so Neil, we appreciate all your, who you are, all you've done, but most importantly, who you are. I think Jimmy used the word epitome in one of his descriptions, and so did Buck, and I will have to say, you are the epitome of all the James Stevenson Award represents. So thank you for being who you are.
First, I just want to say, congratulations, Neil, and I dressed a little extra tonight just for you. Got rid of my normal suit there. I just want to thank you for your advocacy and promotion of Garner. You know better than I do, being a native of Garner, how exceptional Garner is, and your ability to advocate on behalf of Garner and make it, take that exceptionality and display it for everyone, it pays off in ways that are hard to quantify. I also want to say that your recognition that the arts are part of economic development is obvious, but it's not obvious to everyone. And so I want to thank you for just the foundation that's been built in Garner for what we're going to continue to do into the future. I also want to say that personally, that I admire your effortless energy and passion for Garner. I'm a much lower-energy person than you are, but the effortlessness of your advocacy is something to aspire to. People like you are, and the relationship the town has with the Chamber and all these organizations, people like you that are the glue, that make all those things stick together and work together. And so, again, your legacy is greatness of the entire town, and so thank you.
Mr. Page, Neil, I was on the virtual celebration as well, and wrote you a long note to say that I'm sorry I had to go to come to a town council meeting. I wish I could've stayed longer, not realizing that I would see you here. And I would say, what I heard was befitting and appropriate, and I remember first really working with you on an effort for revitalization of downtown, when you were approached by members of the GRA and the mayor, reference to Hope Park, about pulling that effort together and getting various business entities involved with that. And that was, I would say, my first working experience I had with you, which was a really good one, to see how the community came together in a private-public endeavor, in a park that was adopted by the town, and all the kids can now come and play on it. And it was initially designed for kids who had special needs. So that showed me where your heart was there, and it was really, and then from then on, it was like every two-week meeting there in the Chamber for the Garner Economic Development Corporation, and having our meetings there, and just the wholesomeness and how you were so pleasant to be there, and providing whatever we needed to facilitate our meetings was greatly appreciated. And your love of music was one thing I also learned about, for a while I've learned you. And you'll be missed in that arena, but I'm pretty sure we will see you around and keeping you involved with the town, because as I've heard here, your heart is here, and we appreciate you, and we know that behind you or beside you is a great wife as well, who's supporting you to let you come out and play with us as we work around Garner. So Neil, congratulations to you, happy for you, and we know that we will continue to see you.
Thank you, council, for your good comments, and thank you, Elmo, for recognizing Karen, who's been a faithful servant there with him by his side for so many years. And Neil, I think I've learned over my years of serving on this council, over the years that I have, that there are any number of things that can make a town good and even great. Many times, we look at perhaps the buildings that are built and say, you know, that town is known for that. Sometimes we look at things like our parks and recreational facilities, and we think we have some good ones here in Garner, and they hope they help to make our town be what it is. Sometimes we might look at our roads and say, "Well, hey, they have great roads and highways there." That's something we're working on, by the way. But I would say to you that I think what really is at the core of a great town are its people, and we have a lot of good and great people here. If you look at the previous recipients of this award, going back to 1988, many of you know all of those. Personally, I know many of those myself, and you're joining what I consider to be an exclusive list of persons who have received this prestigious award. So we know that you'll make our town proud. Thank you for already doing that. Thank you for being one of the great people in Garner, and it's my great privilege to honor you tonight by giving you this plaque, presented the James R. Stevens Service to Garner Award, presented to Neil Paget, and the year, of course, is 2020. So, sir, we invite you to the podium here, and social distancing. I'll just place this on the table.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, pleasure. So Mayor Marshburn, members of the town council and staff, and the Stevens family, thank you so much for taking the time and doing this ceremony this evening. It's a great honor to receive this award. Karen is kind of scratching her head, though. There's been this recurring theme of energy, and she's probably wondering where the energy is when I get home. A lot of times, a car ride home, it starts dwindling, and by the time I get home, there's not a whole lot left, so she's a little bit concerned, a little bit confused by this, but I'll explain all that later. So yes, I am a product of Garner. I'm a lifelong resident of Garner, and I've been active since the beginning. In fact, I was just reminiscing with Vicki a little bit. So very active in high school, through the church, through all the extracurriculars at the school, and thinking back, one thing in common with all those activities I was involved in, there was always an adult or a group of adults who was there meeting with us, so that we could have those meetings, that we could develop teamwork and leadership and all those things we didn't really know we were doing. But they were always adults, and they were exhibiting what it is to serve your community, I think. I didn't realize it at the time, but they were the ones who set, put that example before me. So when I returned right after college, I immediately got very involved in the community again. It wasn't long before I was taking on projects that I wasn't quite sure how to do, and I thought, "Who am I going to ask this?" So in many cases, I was going back to those same adults who'd helped me out in high school to get advice from them. So then there's more, a little more of a peer-to-peer thing, but they were my advisors. Well, then in the '90s, some of those very same people started receiving the James Stevens Service to Garner Award. So I would come to the ceremonies, and thinking, "These really are the Garner giants. These are our heroes, and how lucky am I that I've been one of the ones they have worked with?" So at that time, little did I know that one day my name would be on that list. So it is a great honor to have my name added to that list of giants in Garner, so thank you so much for that. Another reason this is a big honor, I'm not sure if this happened before, that four past recipients got together to make a nomination. So I'm very proud that there were four of my good friends who are past recipients who got together and worked on the nomination, and I am amazed how well they recaptured the last 40 years. They had some resources that really helped them along, but yeah, you guys nailed it. So two final points. One is, yes, it's been a lot of work over the last 40 years, but I can tell you, it's been more fun. So thank goodness, you guys have supported me and helped me in all these things that have been so much fun to me. And the other point I want to close with is, every single project I've been involved with took a whole lot of people to work. I was typically the facilitator, and thank, again, all of you who've worked with us as volunteers. You let me cast you on the stage, you even stepped up and supported financially some of these endeavors. So I just thank all of you in Garner for allowing me the place to do this work that has been so fulfilling, again, so fun to me. So thank you all.
Obviously, you're welcome to stay, but we don't blame you if you are here for the ceremony and you choose to leave now. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, we're going to go back to our regular agenda schedule at this time, and we will go back to what we call petitions and comments. This is a time for persons to make comments on items not included on this agenda. We ask you to sign up in advance, and I don't believe anybody did, so at this point, I'll just ask if there's anyone here who came to make comments to the council. If so, if you would lift your hand, and I'll recognize you. Okay? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move to the next area. The next item is the adoption of the agenda. Council, you have the agenda before you. What is your pleasure as relates to the agenda as we have it now?
I move that Mr. Mayor will approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Yeah, I would like to request a closed session at the end of the meeting for personnel.
Okay. Okay. And we'll get a site for that when we go into closed session, I guess, yeah. Okay. All right. All right. All those in favor of adopting the agenda with the closed session at the end, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. All right. The consent agenda you have before you, a couple, two items there, I believe. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I move.
Second. Second. Questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And there's no opposition to that as well. Okay. Following our agenda, we now have a couple of items under new-old business. First item is a DFI presentation of updated development programs and tabletop parking scenario, and let's see, is Mari here with us, or is she?
Mr. Mayor, she is on Teams tonight, so she just asked, oh, there she is. She had just asked me to introduce the item, and since we've got her up now, I'll let her, since she's been able to be on screen, we'll let her introduce the item.
Ms. Howe.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. I would like to introduce to you again Matt Crook and Marie Dowling. They're here to speak with us tonight about the updates to the development pad proposal that you guys requested when they came and presented last May. Just as a refresher, they presented sort of their scenarios of office and different residential options, and you all asked to look at the potential of adding an additional floor, and it look at the potential of adding an additional floor and exploring the tabletop parking scenarios as well. So the DGA went ahead and extended their contract with Kim Lee Horn to do some scenario mapping of the tabletop parking, which I will turn over to Matt and Rory for them to present tonight.
Okay, welcome. And go right ahead.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, let me see if I can share my screen. All right, are folks seeing the presentation at this point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this is just recapping what Mari just said. So on May 26, we presented our program analysis and financial analysis. Some key question considerations during that meeting was, how do we solve this parking? We kind of considered some other potential options, but it kind of came back to looking a little bit deeper into this tabletop platform parking scenario. And then also to consider public participation options for future partnership with the development. The next steps are those steps, you know, we went back and updated our work. And that's what we're sharing with you today. So our agenda tonight is pretty short and sweet. We're going to look at that program update, the tabletop parking update. We've run kind of a scenario of looking at what a public investment might look like for that type of parking. And we'll close out with some considerations and next steps that we can discuss. So this is a look at adding a fourth floor to that original three-floor program building that we were looking at. We have scaled the top floor back about 15 feet. So this creates a feature for the building, patio area for the fourth floor users. But then also, it helps with scaling on Main Street. One of the considerations we wanted to take into account was not overwhelming pedestrians on Main Street based on current structures and historic structures that exist already on Main Street and the rec center. These are not indicative at all of architectural standards or anything like that. They're really massings. This kind of shows from the rear of the building what a tabletop parking scenario might look like. But what this does with adding a fourth floor, it increases the square footage of the building from about 38,000 square feet to 47 or 55, depending on the parking option. I'll caveat that. We'll talk about it in our next section. But, you know, we're increasing the footprint by almost 10,000 square feet total. The development investment increases. So I think originally, we were talking about a $7 to $8 million investment, depending on the use, if it's residential or office. Now we're talking about a $10 to $12 million investment. That does not include the tabletop parking area, the parking area that's outside of the building. But what that does is, it makes the project a little bit more attractive for a wider range of developers. Certain developers don't really want to work on a small-scale project that's mixed-use. It's a difficult-type project to work on. But when you start to get to larger footprint or a larger amount of square footage and more capital involved in the project, it becomes more enticing to the development community. Mentioned that about the top floor being reduced, and then also the feasibility and attractiveness to developers. Any questions about what we're looking at with the fourth floor? I think it was Councilmember Singleton that wanted us to really look at adding to this. I will say, it doesn't necessarily improve the economics or detract the economics of the project. It does just increase the size and scale of the project. Part of that is because you do still have cost, you know, the cost of construction for a fourth floor, but then also the cost of an elevator and then additional services and things like that. So it kind of nets out. And where we were last time was that this project is very close, if not financially feasible from a private standpoint, private development standpoint. So it does not hinder the financial, you know, feasibility of this program by adding a fourth floor. In fact, it might make it more attractive.
I have one question. The note about the top floor being reduced to square footage, that's because, based off this concept that you're showing us, the patio on the front being roughly 15-foot deep, that's what reduces the square foot, based off the image we're looking at, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm, make sure I was understanding it correctly. Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay.
To that point, you know, a developer might say, hey, we want to develop the full extent of the fourth floor. We're just looking at it to try and keep in harmony with what's existing there. That would be a decision point that the council could evaluate in the future. But this is just something that we were taking into consideration, not necessarily trying to be prescriptive of what the building development needs to be, but just something to understand, hey, if you do three-quarters or half of the floor on the top, does that really, does that help drive the economics? Does that hurt the economics of the property or the development? And what we were able to see is that it doesn't. If it is the full extent of the floor, if it's another 12,800 square feet on the fourth floor, that leasable square footage would probably go to help the project economically. Next, I'll talk about the tabletop parking. So there are some key assumptions that I wanted to lay out before we dive into the two scenarios that we riddled down to. First of all, there's existing surface parking that's adjacent to the rec center. We were looking at that, you know, could we build around that existing parking lot area where the dumpster is? Or would it be taken out and replaced? And with working with Kim Lee Horn, we kind of found that it's a sunk cost either way. So taking it out, redoing it, making it kind of one cohesive parking area with the tabletop parking is probably the likely least scenario that would move forward. And so our scenarios account for that. Secondly, the basement level underneath the building, I think when we originally presented the program, we demonstrated that there would be about 23 to 25 spaces underneath the building. We're assuming that's going to be private development cost and something that the developer will own and operate themselves. The rationale there is, that parking underneath the building is almost, it's almost a part of the stabilization of the building itself and to that topography. So it's a part of the shoring up of the building and the structure that is holding up the building. And so having that kind of bundled together makes sense that that would be kind of owned the development party to pursue and to own and to operate. Additionally, because of the additional parking here, there's the dumpster relocation and potentially transformer relocation. I will point that out as we kind of go through our options. This is option one. This is looking from Main Street, and it's kind of a bird's-eye view. Down here at the bottom, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor or not. Let me see if I can do a laser pointer. Can y'all see this laser pointer?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
This is the outline of the rec center. So this would be a drive that is cut from Main Street, and this is how the tabletop parking would be accessed. This would be over what is the current parking area next to the rec center. And this would be the retail or the footprint of the building. There are a couple of things about this option. One, it adds 134 new spaces, so 23 underneath the building dedicated to the development, 26 replaced underneath. They would be dedicated to the rec center. So that would leave 85 total within the tabletop platform that could be leased back to the private development or could be used to support downtown Garner. For these spaces, and I include the 26 dedicated to the rec center because they're going to have to be rebuilt, that's 111 spaces for 1.6 million. One thing I'll note here, the box where it says T is the transformer that supports the rec center. I'll get into that in a little bit regarding option two, but you can see that there's clearance here. That's kind of one of the engineering constraints that we found with building anything above a transformer. Duke Energy has to have a crane truck that is able to lift and take this out if they need to. So this way, this option kind of avoids that. Secondly, this option also avoids what would be some additional questions or considerations around fire and life safety issues being close to the rec center. Option two is kind of our max, you know, pushing it to the max limit, thinking through parking. Again, the drive would come in off of Main Street, but you could see it's in between the two buildings, or it's right in the center of the building. So the two retail locations would be bifurcated by the drive. But you see a much cleaner parking arrangement here with two-way drive aisles. This way, you can actually maximize more parking. It also increases the footprint of the building, about 15,000 square feet, because you are pushing the building closer by putting the drive in the middle of the building. You're pushing the building closer to the rec center. But that does leave open the question about the transformer. You can see it's kind of over or underneath the parking now. And then also, it's kind of at a questionable distance next to the rec center. And as far as being able to exit the rec center for life safety issues or fire issues, that would be something that we'd have to look into. Additionally, you can't really see it from this advantage or this screenshot, but you can see the corner here is where you would probably have columns that support the tabletop parking. And this is actually where part of the circular traffic flow is for the front entrance of the rec center. So a lot of that would have to be rethought and maybe redesigned as part of the next steps if option two is to be considered. You can see, though, that it does increase the number of spaces to about 147 that could be leased to private development or usable for downtown Garner. For the 173 spaces, it's a $2.2 million estimated cost. This is, again, Kim Lee Horn kind of giving a very broad estimated cost based on their initial draft here. You know, that's very, very much subject to actual EPC numbers or construction numbers.
Matt, if I could add one thing while you're on this slide. The other thing for counsel to be aware of is that in addition to the larger footprint infringing upon the front drive loop, it also may change the side drop-off loop. You may recall, if you were familiar with the rec center design, that it was designed to have a drop-off loop out front and another one using this side parking lot that the parking deck is proposed to be on top of. And this was done from a programming standpoint so that an after-school program or a summer camp program could have a separate traffic pattern from the other traffic using the primary rec center. So there is a consideration that if we do expand to the larger footprint, not only would we need to rethink the front circulation, but we would need to rethink the, possibly, the side circulation to make sure that we're not imposing too much on the original proposed use of both rec center entrances.
We lost the audio.
The whole computer is frozen, so you'll have to give us a second.
Mm-hmm.
Whole thing, like I'd have to turn it off, turn it on.
But it looks like that might...
Some years ago, this would be referred to as technical difficulties. I'm not sure if, in the day of Zoom and other remote stuff, if there's some other explanation.
When in doubt, right?
Yeah. There's a couple of really sensitive connections. Oh, here they come. I can see them, Neil.
You can hear us, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, let me start sharing my screen again. Okay, I think this is where we left off on option two. John, is there anything additional here that you were going to discuss?
I don't know if you heard what I said. I was only pointing out what we talked about previously, that this larger footprint may also indeed the drop-off loop on the side as well as the front. So I'm not sure if you heard any or all of that.
Yeah, yeah. So these are some additional images that we did have Kim Lee Horn look at in at least option one, considering keeping that function of being able to have a drop-off loop and an entrance and exit out of this side of the rec center. So that's away from the main entrance of the rec center. The option two, you know, it'd have to be really looked at or reevaluated. This is looking at the first floor, and you can see it calls out, you know, there's some site civil modifications to this roadway. So there'd be, you know, additional impacts that are probably not considered in that $2.2 million number for If there are no additional questions, I can move to kind of a public investment review, so looking at these two scenarios or just understanding, you know, feasibility of this. So I'll caveat everything that I'm about to mention with saying, the actual partnership model and public participation will depend on a lot of different factors that we just do not have insight into yet. First of all, a finalized development agreement. So each developer is probably going to have a different way of how they want to think about that, the uses. So if it's an office use, there might, you know, be a need for more of the parking spaces to be leased than residential or to other uses. And then parking lease agreements, if that developer or the development is looking to lease back the parking from the tabletop parking. What, you know, what are those rates? Do they escalate? What's the OpEx for the town for the... what it is currently. That will help with, with, add the lower taxes for the, for the city. So we mentioned the cost of, for option one being 1.6 million, option two being about 2.2 million. When using some baseline assumptions, a 20-year loan at 4% interest rate, we're looking at like an annual loan payment of around $95,000 to $144,000. Again, this really depends on a lot of things. We're also assuming like a hypothetical cell proceeds of 275,000 for the property would go to offset the parking cost. So it'd almost be like the down payment. But for parking, a lot of times, you know, this can be almost 100% financed just because it is infrastructure. It is something that's pretty standard. So potential revenue sources. So if you were to think about, you know, $96 to $144,000 a year in, in debt service, how do you pay for that? Again, we use some baseline assumptions here with a hypothetical future tactic that value roughly the cost of the building in year one. So $10,000 or, or $10 million or $12 million, depending on the option. Again, $12 million an option two because the footprint is bigger. It's a, it's a larger building. Therefore, it's going to be, it's going to have a higher tax value. And so that would yield potential tax revenues for the, for the town around $50,000 to $60,000. Then you could look at parking income if the development is to lease back the parking that is provided at $50 a space per month, assuming about a $15 a space per month in OpEx, which is really becomes kind of a capital account in case of maintenance and other just upfits and things like that throughout the, the term of the lease. You're looking at an annual parking revenue from $36,000 to $62,000. So in total, between additional taxes and parking revenue, again, you know, these could go to other things in the town. But if, if you're to think about how to service the debt or what, what potential revenues would be coming to the town to help service debt, we would say about $86,000 to $122,000 to be going to, back to the town as revenue sources.
I'll just add that that potential parking income does not include, or does not account for any revenue generated from just general public parking if, if people were to use the, the tabletop structure for parking to go out to eat. You know, the town could consider charging for parking on an hourly basis. So this does not account for any additional revenues on top of the parking leases.
We'll also note that this, this total, the $86,000 or $122,000 is in year one. So tax revenues, they typically would go up. Potential, based on the assessed value of the building going up. Potential parking income, usually that could be negotiated to have a steady increase as well. And so these, these parking revenues would increase, whereas your debt service typically stays flat for the term. If there's no questions about that, I'll, I'll just move into kind of our last bit here and just some questions and considerations and next steps. One, you know, I, we'd like to hear how the council wants to react to what they've seen and determine, you know, the next steps for moving into solicitation. There have been developers that we've been in touch with. You know, they're staying apprised of the current situation with COVID and the status of this project. But it's, it's ultimately up to the council how they'd like to move forward. Based on that, you know, however that is, DFI's next step would be to provide a draft solicitation for review. That would go through our normal channels of having a staff review, a DGA board review before coming to council for final approval. And then that, that solicitation would be released. We would then start to actively market the project to developers, reach out to them. And then also, you know, that could be posted on Garner's website, but we also post it on our website, as well as actively reach out to developers that we know in our, in our, just through the work that we've done in the past years. So with that, I'll leave it on this slide, but I can turn it over to the mayor or whoever wants to, if, if there's any questions or other considerations.
Okay, thank you. I will, I will see if council have any particular questions or comments, particularly questions for you. Are there any, council? Mr. Ellinger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank you for the time you've put into developing this proposal. And it's good to see it adapt over time with input from the DJ board and this council. And I sort of want to just preface the conversation we're having and our thought process with the fact that Councilman Behringer is a liaison to the Downtown Garden Association Board. Mr. Vance has served on that board previously, and I currently sit on that board. And the bigger picture issue with downtown is that we do need more parking down there. And so I think in addition to looking at this project as a development opportunity, we also need to have in the back of our minds that we have a, a growing parking need in downtown if we're going to continue to grow and expand down there and have more activities and businesses. And when you're talking about options, there aren't many. And there aren't many that sort of pay for themselves. I think there was, and Mr. Hodges can correct me if I'm wrong, there was a discussion of an area for gravel parking and some things, and that was half a million dollars just to do that. So I think in the context of thinking about this and talking about it, we want to look at what the other options we have or don't have with regards to creating more parking in downtown. So again, that's my only comment as we think about this going forward.
Did, did, did you mention or, or suggest the amount, well, you, you suggested amount for revenue from parking there, but would that be based on, I guess I'm trying to figure out, would that be based on some daily, monthly, yearly charges? Or, or how do, how would you calculate that?
That, that's right. That's, that's assuming $50 a space for all of the spaces to be leased. So when I say all of the spaces, it's the, depending on the option, the 85 total that would be leased back to private development for option one, or 147 total for option two. That's assuming, you know, $50 a space leased back to the development. That would be to go to support the uses. So the, the retail on the first floor, and if it's residential or office above. Lenders will want to see dedicated parking for uses. So depending on, you know, the type of use, the parking requirements may differ. But a lender might have different requirements as well, depending on the tenant, depending on the type of, of product. Office tenants might have different, different requirements for parking as well. So it, it's kind of up in the air as far as the amount of parking that would be leased. But we're assuming 100% of the parking spaces would be leased back to the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Can I touch on that again?
Go ahead.
So what you think, Matt, is, an assumption that's made is that all of these leased spaces, you should, we'll go back to the developer for either, whether it's residential and/or business, and/or office or retail, that you believe all the spaces that will be built that aren't either for the rec center are going to be leased back through the development? You feel confident that that's going to happen one way or the other? I'm looking at the revenue stream, whether, whether town, I mean, you showed the options of potential revenue streams between 86 and 122. I just, that, that's the assumption that's made that with an, an agreement with a developer, that part of that agreement will be these spaces to be leased for that development specifically, those developments in that building specifically.
Yeah, I will say that the option one matches the development very closely. So the, the requirement for parking, option one with the reduced number of parking spaces very much mirrors what would be needed from a private development standpoint to meet those requirements for parking. Option number two, there's, there's a strong likelihood because you're not adding as, you're only adding about 15,000 additional square footed, square feet in the, in the total program or total building area. That may or may not, you know, result in additional spaces that would, that would satisfy all 147. But in both cases, you know, in, in this very rudimentary example of revenue sources, we're, we're assuming 100% of the parking would be leased, if not to this development, to other users downtown. But it would be $50 a space per month, 100% leased out.
And I'll, I'll add that this, this won't be a shock to any developer interested in this project. There will be an expectation that they would have to lease parking, new structure parking being built for their project. And, and more than likely, that expense of $50 per space per month would be passed on to whether it's a residential tenant or office tenants.
Okay. And, and the, the parking deck, and this again is what I'm based off the information we have here, would be paid for, it's a public, public dollar. So I'm assuming that's a town of Garner, be a town of Garner project?
That's the assumption. Correct.
That's the assumption. Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Singleton?
I mean, I, I will add, I'll, I'll just add, I mean, there are a lot of ways to structure it, right? I mean, this could be, you, you could lump the, the construction of the garage into the project, and the developer could develop, construct the, the garage. They could even own it and then lease it to this, to the town, and the town subleases it back to the developer. So there's a lot of different ways these, these projects can be structured. So the, the town doesn't necessarily have to be the one building or even owning the garage. But just for simplicity, this is what we wanted to show. Either way, whether it's a lease or a debt payment, they're going to be pretty similar in, in, in cost.
Okay. And I believe either you or Matt stated earlier that on a parking, a, a top, tabletop parking area like this, it's easy to get a loan for that. A public loan, this wouldn't be something you do through bonds. You could, this would be a separate loan because you show a revenue stream for paying off the annual or monthly or annual payments for that type of construction.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Matthew?
I don't have any time.
Okay, go this way.
Yes, I'm just looking at it from the perspective of the rec center beside it. I'm, I'm not real crazy about four floors. It looks like it's a little overpowering to the, to the, well, overpowering for the rec center. And I also, I prefer option one because it still leaves that, that drop-off site for the side of the building, for the programming that is going to be going in there. It's one opinion, but that's, that's where I stand.
Okay, thank you.
Sort of a tangential question related to the subgrade part of the building. And you have it listed here as predominantly being for parking. Is it even possible for that to be used for shops or anything like that? Or is it really just because it's below grade, better suited for parking under the building? Was that a developer choice?
It could be a developer choice, but I think the assumption that we were leading with was this is going to be a partial cutout, so a partial basement of the, of the subfloor. Parking is, you know, the key constraint for this site. That's not to say that a developer comes to the table and really believes in, in the retail potential here and says, you know, we, we'd like to do retail down there as well. I would say it's probably more of a challenge from a retail tenant perspective to be kind of underneath the building and not, not facing Main Street, to be kind of on the backside of the building. Rory, do you have any other thoughts about that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say in a scenario where there's the tabletop structure in place, you wouldn't have retail there. It would be almost entirely unleaseable. You know, we do have some built-in space there that could be used for storage, for tenant amenities from a residential standpoint. You know, without that tabletop structure there, I think you could potentially have some leasable space back there. But again, it would be very challenging for, for any sort of type of retail use that needs any visibility, just because of given the access and then the location.
And I guess my other question is, you talked about various scenarios of the developer building it and leasing it and thus leasing it back. Would there be scenarios where we could avoid financing charges with regards to our financial contribution?
Yeah. So in that scenario, the developer would finance the entire thing, the development and the parking garage. And you all would, would, could lease, lease it back, so to speak, to the developer. And so that would, there would be probably some built-in finance charges on the developer's side that would get passed through to, to the town. But there would not be any financing obligations for the town in that scenario.
That's all.
Mr. Singleton, nothing? Okay. Mr. Town Manager or John, any comments, observations?
Yeah, one thing I was going to mention, we had talked about internally, was, you know, over the last few months, I know Mr. Singleton has brought up the possibility of having charging stations somewhere in town. And this might be a good opportunity to add them to a project. I could see, you know, possibly having some on that bottom floor. So that's something you might want to consider, put it in RFP. That could be a way to get some of those in and get that started in town. So we've talked about that.
While we've got Matt and Rory here, we might just see if they have any commentary on any, any things like that, that would be somewhat of a public-private partnership on an amenity like a car charging station, if that is something that you would sometimes see in a proposal like this.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, that, those are, those are being built into any deck. You see in Durham or Raleigh these days, it's something that most cities and towns want, something that the residents want. When you talk about, you know, some of the newer condo projects that have gone up in the Triangle area, a lot of their parking areas will, will have the, the ability to hook into charging stations. So I, I don't think that would be unexpected to have that requirement within the RFP.
One more question.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. So we have these two different scenarios. If, when we get to the RFP portion, are these just basically going to be reference scenarios for us and the developer? And will be more depending on them to coll, collaborating with them to come up with a workable scenario? How firm would we be in terms of, would we be just saying we want this number of spots? Or do we want to say we want a certain configuration or in the RFP itself? Or is that negotiable as we engage developers on their responses?
Yes, that's a, that's a good question. I'm glad you brought that up. I wanted to make that clarification before we, before we got off the meeting. So just as we were, we want to leave the solicitation open for residential or office uses. We would, what we'd like you all to maybe take some sort of action on is, is if you do have an interest in exploring this route, or, or you would be open to discussing this tabletop scenario with a private developer when we get to that point. We would like to include it in the solicitation as a, a means of providing more parking for the development. We probably wouldn't include too much more information other than estimated cost of the tabletop and the fact that the, the town is, is willing to discuss public participation on the, the deck. We would want that to get fleshed out once we see what developers come back with. So really, it would just be including within the solicitation, the, the fact that the town is willing to explore a tabletop structure parking situation and potentially a public-private partnership with that, with those costs. But we would, we would probably leave out any more details than that.
I guess sort of a curiosity question would show my ignorance regarding these charging stations. Would that be considered a, an income-producing item where people pay for that? Or is that just a public service sort of?
We would want that to get fleshed out once we see what developers come back with. So, really, it would just be including within the solicitation, the fact that the town is willing to explore a tabletop structure parking situation, and potentially a public-private partnership with that, with those costs, but we would probably leave out any more details in that.
I guess sort of a curiosity question, which shows my ignorance regarding these charging stations, would that be considered an income-producing item where people pay for that, or is that just a public service sort of item?
It's, from, when we've seen it in decks in the Triangle, it's been a public service, it has not been something that is charged for.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, one other thing that we might want to consider adding to the RFP is some notion of the possibility of including some type of public art initiative within the development, and that does not have to be murals, it does not have to be, you know, whatever, but even design of the parking itself could have some elements that at least help continue the efforts that DGA and Parks and Rec and others have made with public art. And sometimes those things don't really have to cost a lot, they really just have to be included from the beginning. So, we, I know that we're working, a team of us are working with the City of Raleigh right now on how public art is going to go into the design of stations for bus rapid transit, so it's not going to be necessarily, again, a painting on the wall, it might be, but it could just be that the handrails are going to be done with some type of element that gives a nod to the area that you're in. So, I think if it's reasonable, if Matt and Rory don't think it's too unreasonable, and council's willing for us to think about including some references to things like public art, I think it's a very good place in town for us to continue the efforts that have already been underway.
Yeah, I would certainly agree with your premise, that's a good place to consider it, for sure. Okay, council, any other, go ahead.
I was just going to say, absolutely, I mean, you know, this is, this is one of the reasons why you all decided to go about this process, is so that you have the control, and then you can provide those expectations to developers when they come to the table, and so that they know upfront, you know, what it's going to take for you all to move forward with them. So, if it's, whether it's, you know, charging stations, certain design criteria, you know, public art, those are the things that we want to get out there right now.
Okay.
I do have one more, pull a question, one more question. How would the fact that this is in an opportunity zone play into our RFP, or our negotiating position with regards to what gets developed?
We will certainly have that noted within the RFP, you know, Matt and I have already had conversations with a couple of developers that are focused on opportunity zone, opportunities right now, and so, you know, it's definitely something that will be on the forefront of the solicitation, and when we're talking about this opportunity with developers. You know, I will say that your typical opportunity zone investor is still going to require pretty much the same hurdle from an investment standpoint that they were requiring before opportunity zones were a thing, but that doesn't mean that there's not an added benefit, and so it's certainly something that we continue to stress with them, that, you know, if you're used to getting a 15% hurdle, well, you're, because if this is only 12% IRR, you're still getting that extra, sort of three to four percent bump on the backside with that opportunity zone investment, so it definitely has some negotiating power at the end of the day.
Would it be possible for you all to sort of quantify that opportunity zone benefit for developers, so that we would have sort of a figure or a number as to what their potential tax savings would be? I know there are different variables in terms of how long they hold it, and?
Absolutely, I mean, we can include all that in the, I mean, we can even have, I mean, we probably will have an entire section in the solicitation document that talks about what opportunity zones are and the tax benefits, and we can explain, just in case there are, I mean, because there will be interested parties that aren't familiar with how opportunity zone tax structure works, so we will have all that laid out.
Thank you.
Ms. Howe, was there anything else you wanted to add at this point?
The main thing I'll just add is a little bit of context for you all, I think we've discussed, you know, downtown parking before, specifically the development of the gravel lot on Rand Mill. For context, that would be about 59 spaces, and I think the cost, not including the Rand Mill street improvements, was, I think, again, about at least half a million dollars. So, I think one of the things that we've seen in this tabletop parking scenario is that we're getting almost double that, and it's going to be in a much more central location to where we're going to be seeing a lot more development happening in downtown. So, I think it's really going to be where it's needed, you know, we, DGA was really excited to kind of see this, and see how, you know, that's essentially doubling our existing parking in downtown. The angled parking on Main Street is about just over 100 spots over four blocks, so for, you know, about 111 on option one, after you take into account the rec center spots, you know, that's, you're basically doubling what's available in downtown, and it's being done in a space where you're going to be able to access a major activity center of downtown. And then, you know, also from our perspective, just being able to see that this is a project that could be financed apart from the bond, so it doesn't add, you know, to the financial burden or of the bond program, was a benefit that we saw. So, I just wanted to offer that context, and, you know, the DGA board, I think, was very much in favor of, you know, pursuing this over other options that we've discussed in the past. So, we just wanted to say, you know, thank you for considering it, and thank you to Rory and Matt for working with Kimble Horn to work out those scenarios.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any council members have any questions for Ms. Howe?
One more, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead, Ms. Singleton.
Just to confirm, tabletop one, excuse me, not tabletop one, option one, keeps the drop-off loop at the rec center. It has the entryway on the side, but it also keeps the terminal from Duke Energy in place. Relocating a Duke Energy terminal, I'm assuming would not be very cheap, I'm assuming it'd be rather costly, is that correct?
Yes, likely, over 10,000.
I thought it might be more than that, I thought, that sounds, that sounds reasonable to me, based off some other costs that we've had to deal with utilities, so I thought it might be more than that. But the, number, option two eliminates, basically eliminates the bottom, excuse me, it eliminates the driveway loop that was intended for the outside of the rec center, correct?
It would just have to be refigured out, and you can see, like, it kind of disrupts the entryway for the front entrance as well, so.
Yes.
You'd have to do a little bit more civil engineering, it does not, you know, we could look at reviewing that, but we just did not ask Kimble Horn to kind of go back and replay with that option, because option two already has such significant changes, you know, the transformer, the soul, and then also the egress from the rec center, and being so close to the rec center from a fire safety standpoint.
Okay, all right, thank you again for confirming that.
Matt, could you go back one slide so I can follow on part of Mr. Singleton's question? Mr. Singleton, it does preserve the? Option one does preserve it if we make some modifications, so on this slide, it's modified to preserve that loop, but on the very first version you saw of option one, I believe that it still had, it was not in there. So, there is, there may be one graphic, if you're looking at these slides later, there may be one graphic that may, there, that still shows the diagonal parking on the top, so you can't really see underneath that that loop is there. But there's, with a change of a few minimal spaces, we can keep the loop.
And option, and option one is, will be direct access on the side off Main Street, not going through the building in either, in either, and option one, that's where it's from, that'll access the parking on the side, not through the building. I mean, it doesn't show it on here.
This is the ground floor, or this is what is currently there, it would show the configuration of the parking underneath the building, and then also the rec center parking, but in the, in this, in this slide, it shows how the parking, how you actually enter for the parking on the, on the main floor, which would be accessing for Main Street.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Comments, questions? So, what action, let's see, is our next step, this is, yeah, determine timing for solicitation? Is that, is that what the council is being asked to, or are you going to bring a recommendation on that?
So, I think that we do tonight, just want to make sure that council in general is agreeable to the options you've seen, and that from there, the DFI can start working on a draft solicitation, and if they would like to go ahead and discuss some of the timing elements now, I'll let Matt and Rory bring that discussion back up, but we do want to just affirm that you're ready for them to move forward writing an RFP based around these general principles.
Okay, thank you. Council, I'll ask you to weigh in, either by comment, or we can, we can take a vote if we need to, but I guess I sense maybe a desire to move ahead, but speak to me, I see some nodding heads, okay? Three down here, anyway.
Oh, yes, we'll forward.
Okay. All right, council gives consensus to move ahead with that, and John, you said the next step would be what?
I think just Matt and Rory asking any additional questions they would like of council to be able to start that work, and to include also if there's any timing discussion that they wanted to bring up tonight.
Yeah, my only question is that, you know, we heard from council member Behringer about the fourth floor not being a preferred option, is that something that we can include in our solicitation, and at a later date, the council can take into consideration whether or not they'd want to use the fourth floor, or have a fourth floor or not, or is that something that, you know, we need to be specific with the development community, saying they cannot go above three fours?
I'll go ahead to speak, I'm in favor of four floors, I don't know why all the buildings have to be the same height. You go in downtown Raleigh, and the buildings aren't the same height. We need diversity, you need different heights, it shows progress, I mean, if somebody wanted to come down and buy a Goner baseball and build a five and six-story office building, would we say no? I don't think so, so I think it's fine. We need something different, we need something that's more attractive for development. Tabletop parking gives us more spaces, let's try to maximize the space for the development community, but also how good it will look downtown. It'll be different, it'll stand out what you want it to stand out, I mean, that's the whole point, so.
Okay.
I'm in favor of the four-story, I'm also in favor, Ms. Behringer mentioned option one with the loop, and I support that also, because we put the loop in for the rec center for a reason, and I think we should continue to go that way, but that's just me.
Yeah, I agree, certainly on the loop.
I will say that there, sorry to interrupt, but there would not be, I guess a developer could come back and say, we think three floors works well, and so you could see options for just a third floor, building, or a building with three floors, and not four, it's really just, how much do you want to limit or constrict what the development party can do?
Okay, thank you. Other council members care to weigh in on that?
I'd still prefer three floors, but I'm not going to follow my sword for it, we'll look at all options.
Mr. Stantz?
I have nothing, I'm.
We'll forward. I have a preference for four floors, I think it increases the feasibility of it, I think the market will support it, and I guess, you know, that's kind of where my position is.
Okay, I believe the sense of the council would be to support the four floors, as shown in the rendition there. So, that would not be a, that would not be an obstacle. Did I say that right?
Okay.
Okay, so.
And regarding timing, to John's point, we would take, you know, this feedback, incorporate it into a draft solicitation, share that with the DGA board and staff. That will likely take about a month or so for us to complete, and then, that would then, after it's kind of gone through that process of being edited or updated, would come to council for, that would actually be for a motion to approve the solicitation as drafted or as presented, and then for us to start our solicitation process. We can discuss it at that time, but, you know, the timing or the amount of time that you'd want the solicitation to be open is still something we'd want to understand or to know. Our typical, I mean, it really depends on the time of year, but I would say our typical solicitation is open for, from any time from 60 to 90 days. Sometimes we allow an extension, you know, of 15 or 30 days, depending on where developers are in conversation, so that's additional, you know, information that we can bring back when we get a solicitation for approval.
Okay, I guess just one question I have, does the current circumstance we find ourselves in relating to COVID-19 interfere with your proposed timeframe in terms of the solicitation process, and who's actively looking for projects like this?
That's a good question, I would say it ultimately rests with council, how they'd like to move forward, if they want to have an extended solicitation period to try and maximize folks' ability to respond, but I think from our standpoint, we have gotten interested parties, we have found that developers are still interested in doing projects, and so, you know, I think in either scenario, I think it would be okay. Rory, do you have any additional?
Yeah, I think. I think not only COVID, but also, we're likely to be releasing this around the holidays, or just before, and so we wouldn't want to have the response deadline to come in, whether it's Thanksgiving or Christmas, so for that reason, along with COVID creating some delays, we would probably keep this solicitation open for at least 90 to 120 days, just to give us more time, and have more time for outreach. But again, we'll come to you when we provide the draft solicitation, we'll come to you with our suggestions for you all to review and comment on.
Okay, thank you, yes, that sounds reasonable to me. Anything else from council on this? All right, we appreciate the presentation, we'll look forward to hearing back from you when you're, when you're ready.
Thank you all, have a good time.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Okay. All right, council, let's move to the next item, or I guess the last item under new and old business. Good evening, Ms. Loller, good to see you again.
Good to see you as well.
Joan Sausage Road Design Contract.
Yes, exciting presentation for you all tonight. Good evening, Mayor Marshburn, members of the town council.
Good evening.
And, sorry, let me just get presentation pulled up here. Sorry, folks, I have this presentation up momentarily, but as Mayor Marshburn commented, I am here tonight to discuss the Joan Sausage Road Phase One Design Contract. And here we go. Okay, so I'd like to start off just with an overview of the improvements that the townhouse planned for Joan Sausage Road, and the two phases that we've split them up, for anybody who doesn't have familiarity with it, or just as a refresher in general for everybody. And so, the improvements that are planned along Joan Sausage Road are split up between Phase One, or the north section, and Phase Two, or the south section, and along Phase One, there's a planned widening to a four-lane median divided roadway. And along Phase Two, or the southern section, is a plan to realign Joan Sausage Road to do a grade separation over the railroad, and to extend Joan Sausage Road down to US-70. And I just outlined that the intended funding source for Phase One is meant to be the the intended funding source for Phase One is meant to be, the original plans were to fund using lap funding and a combination of town funds. And for Phase Two, the intention is to primarily fund this through STIP funding. And the project is currently in spot 6.0, but we do not know how that has scored yet. That's coming down, further down later this year. So the design contract that was included in your agenda packet is for the Phase One improvements for that northern section. And just to go back, so this will include the widening of Joan Sausage Road between the Amazon facility down to East Garner Road. And initially, the assumption was that the improvements at the East Garner Road and Joan Sausage Road intersection would be included as a part of the Phase Two improvements. But as staff was discussing the scope and preparing the scope, it was, we realized that it might make more sense to set the intersection at East Garner Road and Joan Sausage Road in order to have that set up to align with the future grade separation further south of there. Because it was pointed out that if we don't complete that work now as a part of the rest of the Phase One improvements, essentially we would have to backtrack once the Phase Two improvements are completed, and that pavement would just be torn up. So it just seemed to make more sense to include that all as part of Phase One improvements. So that's a slight change from what the initial assumptions that we had. And so the fee that HDR, the on-call transportation design consultant, came up with for this work for the 100% design for Phase One is just short of $1 million. And so this will complete 100% design for Phase One. It will also complete 15% of the design for Phase Two, and the reason for that is that we need to advance the design for the southern portion and for the grade separation in order to determine what the proper elevation needs to be for the Joan Sausage Road and East Garner Road intersection. So that's the reason that the 15% is included for Phase Two. And so this would also provide us final cost estimate to construct Phase One, and it would also complete the environmental analysis for the entire corridor so for Phase One and Phase Two. And so all of that is included in the scope and fee in the agenda packet. Additionally, you have two schedules in your agenda packet, and the reason for that is what I am about to go into. So typically, developing the schedule is a straightforward exercise, but in this case, it was slightly more complicated because of NC DOT's funding situation currently. And so there are a couple of factors that have caused some funding uncertainty. And so the first one is that NC DOT has gone below its mandated cash balance, which I'm sure many of you have heard about over the past year. And so around last fall, fall of 2019, NC DOT had to place many preliminary engineering projects on hold, which has affected the town already with the White Oak Roundabout. So I'm not sure if you're aware, but that has faced many delays as a part of NC DOT's cash balance challenges. And so that's one thing that we want to keep in consideration. And so the second one is that NC DOT is facing a revenue crisis due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Because as you probably know, majority of revenue is generated from people driving, and with stay-at-home orders and people working remotely, there isn't anywhere near as much driving as there was months ago. And so it's anticipated that there will be upwards of $300 million lost in revenue for this current year. And that's just an estimate. It's likely it could be worse than that. And so we point this out just so that, you know, this is likely to have impacts on the LAP program, which is what we were assuming. We would pursue LAP funding to be able to complete, at the very least, construction for Phase One. But we just want to keep into consideration that these funding challenges are likely to impact the program, make it more competitive than it already is, and there's the potential that we would not receive funding through the LAP program. And so those are just some things that we need to keep in mind. And so given that situation, staff decided that it might be prudent to develop a second approach in which we assume that the town might have to forego LAP funding, just as another consideration, so that we know what that might look like and for town council to be able to consider that route. And so I put together kind of a rough comparison of what the two approaches might look like, both if the town were to pursue LAP funding and if the town were to forego LAP funding. And this is just for Phase One, for the northern section. This is not for Phase Two. And so before I go into the comparison of, you know, different costs associated, different timelines associated with each of these approaches, I do want to point out a few caveats. And so one thing is that the cost for the design for the non-LAP approach would be less than that $999 million, because if we were to proceed with the approach where we forego LAP funding, there are several tasks that wouldn't be required, and so it would cost less, essentially, because the consultant would be performing fewer tasks. And I'll get into that a little bit more later. Another caveat that I would like to point out is that for the calculation of right-of-way and construction cost under the LAP approach, that is assuming that the town would pay 20% and that 80% of the total project cost would be covered by LAP funds. And the final thing that I wanted to point out that is not on the slide is that these cost estimates come directly from the feasibility study that was completed end of fall, beginning of winter of this year. And so in the feasibility study, HDR produced cost estimates for Phase One and Phase Two. But as I mentioned, we had previously assumed that the work at East Garner Road and Joan Sausage Road intersection would be included as a part of Phase Two. So the cost estimate will have to be adjusted once the consultant gets into work to include the work for that intersection as part of Phase One. So essentially, what I'm saying is that the cost estimate that was outlined in the feasibility study for Phase One will be slightly higher. So, and that number is, so the, and just to walk through, so to walk through the two options. So if we were to pursue LAP funding and assuming that we are awarded LAP funding at an 80/20 split, the overall cost would roughly be just short of $2 million. And so that's including the feasibility study that was already completed. The design work, which is what we're presenting the contract to you for tonight, that would include right-of-way and construction. And so then comparing that to a non-LAP approach, and again, keep in mind that this number would actually be a little bit lower than $4 million, because that design contract fee would have to be adjusted and would be a little bit lower for the non-LAP approach. So I just wanted to give you a ballpark idea of what the, what costs the town would have to bear under each approach. So obviously, the downside to not pursuing LAP funding is that then the town would have to assume a higher cost. But the trade-off there would be that the estimated, it's estimated that construction would begin a year and about three months sooner if we were to pursue the non-LAP approach. And that's because when you proceed through the LAP program, there are several checkpoints that are required as a part of the program. And additionally, NC DOT has several points along the design, as design progresses, where they have to review the design. And this, our town engineer could tell you very well that there's a lot of resubmittals and a lot of back and forth. So this slows down the design process. And so that is the reason why there's such a big gap in the timeline that it would take to complete construction for these two approaches. Before I get into the last slide, I did want to point out that staff had discussed kind of a hybrid approach, because we would like to offer another option. We don't want it to just be, you know, fund it all on the town's dime or pursue LAP funding. And what we were discussing is that we could proceed under the assumption that the town will fully fund it, but we could submit a application for LAP FY '22, so for this current application cycle. And we could submit it under a higher cost share for the town, so assuming that we pay, let's say roughly 70% or 80%, which would ensure that the project score is higher. And that way, we wouldn't necessarily have to say right off the bat that we are foregoing funding and not considering it. So that's kind of an in-between approach to the two that I outlined. And before I proceed, John, would you like to mention anything, or Jeff? Jeff's on the call.
So I'll follow on to what Gabby said about LAP. We have learned a lot in the last two years when we've been working through the two primary LAP projects that the town's done, the Timber Drive sidewalks, as well as Akron Hebron Road, Akron Hebron White Oak Roundabout, that actually working through these larger projects that we've never really done much of before, we've all had to learn the hard way, these additional timestamps and some of the requirements for that. So when we saw a time difference of a year and three months for just the, assuming that there was no issue with LAP funding, that big difference we knew was greater than we all would anticipate it was going to be. And then when you couple that with the challenges with, potentially the challenges with funding, we at least wanted to bring the option back to council to say, if council wanted us to think about or talk with our financial advisors about ways that we could fund the entire system into our road, we at least wanted to show those differences to you. So that's why we're showing you a couple of things here tonight. I think the other thing is while that $4 million number will go up some, and we know it will because of what Gabby said, it is still lower than I think all of us envisioned the Phase One portion of the roadway to be when we had way, way back guesstimate numbers. And so because it's as much as half as much as we had talked about in the past, we thought all those reasons were reason enough to bring back these options to you and discuss the timing and the funding options. So the one, it's a lot for a decision tonight, but we also don't want to get the consultant started on doing work until we know how we want to proceed. So we'd like to get them started as soon as possible, but if we are not going to make any type of LAP application this fall, and we need more time to discuss it, then I think that we could do that. We just know that we're delaying them starting their work.
So if we pursue the LAP, the money that's available through that, generally speaking, what timeframe would we be working on to know if we have been approved for that?
So this actually represents two LAP applications. So the scenario there would be a LAP application for, LAP can be applied for for design, right-of-way, and construction. And so whatever you apply for has to be able to be completed in a year cycle. So in this scenario, we'd be applying for right-of-way this fall. We would get an informal notice in around the February/March timeframe of next year of whether or not our application looks successful. But then we would not have the money awarded to us until next fall, so October of '21, at which time we could start the right-of-way acquisition process. By using LAP dollars, the right-of-way acquisition process is more time, takes more time, and some might would say costs more because there's so many certifications you have to go through or steps you go through to certify it. We would simultaneously be applying for a construction LAP application in the fall of '21. LAP uses one year ahead, so Gabby and I usually are, if we say '22 and '23, pardon us, but fall of '21, then we would find out in the spring of '22 whether or not we were going to be awarded that. But if the design is not ready to go at that point, then we still could be constrained somewhat by having to finish a project in a fairly short amount of time to get it all committed in the year cycle. So we don't have to finish the work, but we have to commit it. So this is actually two LAP applications represented in that left column.
Okay, counsel, we'll open it up for some discussion.
Gabby, you mentioned, Gabby, if we did non-LAP, that the $999,000 would reduce by what, $40,000, $50,000? Do you know a number? $30,000, $100,000? I don't know. I'm just guessing. I don't, do you have any idea?
So you're saying, sorry, could you repeat that? I was having a...
If we do the non-LAP, then the design costs, as you noted, will be reduced because we don't have the LAP program task. How much would that reduction be? $20,000, $50,000, $100,000? Any guess?
Somewhere in that ballpark. We'd have to, we'd have to ask the consultant to revise the associated scope and fee. So that's the other reason that we wanted to discuss this with you this evening, because depending on which approach you want to take, we would have to have the consultant revise the scope and the fee accordingly. Because currently, the scope and fee that's in the agenda packet assumes that we are pursuing LAP funding. So somewhere in the ballpark of what you were mentioning, it wouldn't be an enormous decrease, but it would be, you know.
Okay, so...
I'm hesitant to put a number to it because...
So the Garner Road-Jone Sausage intersection, we're going to go, I mean, when we first started talking about this three or four years, two or three years ago, and I said, yeah, we should go to and through the intersection, so I'm glad we're doing that. Any cost estimate, how much that would be? You know, is it a half million dollars? Is it a million dollars? Do we have any guess how much the improvements at that intersection will cost?
We were discussing that a month or so ago, and I was ballparking it at maybe $1 million. And again, don't quote me on that. I don't know if Chris would...
I think that's about as good of a guess as you probably made.
So we're figuring at least a million?
Yeah.
Could be slightly high, could be a tad low, but...
In that range.
All right, so it gives us an idea, okay.
Right.
I'm just looking at those numbers. And the one thing of non-LAP is that the town controls from the contract is let because of the financial issues of DOT. 923 is, if everything is perfect, and that's chances of that happening are slim and none. I think we realize because the Akron White Oak Road Roundabout was talked about the first year that southeast, that South Garner was opened as a high school, and this is their fifth year. And it's been delayed, and we don't know when it'll be built yet. So... So that's, you know, that's taking a lot longer than we thought. And Jim, we can't afford for Jones Sausage Road to have construction beginning in 2027, I don't think. But anyway, that's my thought. Thank you for the estimates, the dollar estimates. So we're looking at a million dollars more. You're looking at, at a $5 million project, give or take 5% to 10%. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Singleton. I'll go this way. Questions, comments?
Just a comment. I think one of the things we need to strongly take into consideration is the increased traffic flow we're going to have there with the opening of Amazon. I don't, don't want to spend more money. I want to get the best cost situation we can get. But we've got public safety and traffic issues to deal with, and that's got to weigh in heavily as well.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, looking at the costs for the non-LAP, well, looking at both costs, is that including Phase One and Phase Two?
This is, this is strictly for Phase One, although the, it would include 15% design for that, that southern portion. But yeah, this is, this is for Phase One for that northern portion.
Total cost?
Yes.
For a mill?
Yes.
Early, early estimates.
Right, right. That's still...
These are feasibility, no, these aren't feasibility study. It wasn't a feasibility study, was it?
Yes. This is feasibility study level estimates that we're working with. So we're trying to round up a little bit.
And they did build in some contingency, but that's, it, it will be adjusted as we go through the design process.
Okay, anything else?
What is the, the timeline for Phase Two?
That's a little more complicated. So Phase Two, as I mentioned, so it was submitted into SPOT 6.0 for scoring. And I think they're supposed to get back, they're supposed to release scores approximately May of 2021, if I'm not mistaken. And I mean...
May 2022?
Sorry?
You said May 2022?
21.
21.
Just for the scoring to come back.
Just for the scoring, just so that we know, you know, how, how the project scored. And then that'll give you an idea of when it might eventually proceed, but that, that's, that's more in the seven to 10-year...
What's the best case and worst case on the timeline for Phase Two?
I don't think we would even venture a guess because at that point, it's now a state-funded project that is, we're trying to help get it prepared to get built, but we really, we really don't have a good way of knowing how it would score against everything else that's being submitted in the entire MPO scoring system. So I, I think it would be pretty dangerous for us to venture any kind of guess. I think unknown is the best thing that we would know right now.
The original proposal for Phase One was Garner Road North and some improvement south, but we're, it looks to me like we're making a significant investment into Phase Two. This contract seems to include all the environmental for Phase Two. Is that correct? So we're investing in all the environmental for a project? We have no idea what's going to start?
Although I, I will mention that the one upside to that is in the work that we're proposing to complete as part of Phase One, that, that only stands to improve the score for Phase Two in the SPOT program because we will be advancing the design for the southern portion so that then one advances the design and reduces the cost for Phase Two. And additionally, by completing the, the environmental documentation, that would also reduce the cost for Phase Two, which would help it score better under SPOT Six.
When was that submitted? So if the score's coming back in May, how does this contribute to that scoring?
So it, it continues to be adjusted over time. I think on an, on an annual basis, they'll, they'll factor in that information.
Well, Jeff up, he wanted to weigh in.
Oh, yeah.
If it scores super high, as high as it could possibly score, when would this, when would Phase Two start?
It is not, there's no way to know. Even if we get a score, we aren't sure.
I, I can, I can provide a little context based on what Campo has told us in the past. If it scores in the top segment so that it is, it meets the, the funding threshold, they plan these projects out in five-year time periods. So any project that appears for the first time in that first five-year phase, the earliest it would get started is the fifth year, is what they generally would say. So that, that assumes if it makes it into that top tier and being that it's a new project, first go around, the earliest it could start would be in that fifth year.
2026?
I believe that would be correct.
Or did, as in, you bid it out and started construction? Or you're actually in a position to just start doing your new design, continue your design on that?
If we've, if we've done the right-of-way, that could, that could be construction, but otherwise that would be the start of, of right-of-way and construction together.
With this proposal here, are we looking to do the right-of, begin right-of-way acquisition for Phase One and Phase Two?
No, it's for, for the contract that we're presenting tonight, it's for Phase One.
And how far down south of Jones Sausage Road would we be doing right-of-way acquisition? Because that would be, seems like we've mixed some of Phase One and Phase Two together, and I understand partially why. But I guess you're doing all this environmental, all this work on Phase Two for a project. We don't know when it, best case scenario is 2026. And it could change. There's Amazon doing improvements down there. There's Class A going in, in there.
Matt might be able to provide a little bit of context. With respect to the Phase Two environmental work and the 15% roadway design, out of the million dollars that we have on that design contract, that is probably a fairly minimal amount in comparison to what we're getting on Phase One. To construct Phase One, the reason we're wanting to incorporate that intersection is it's got to come up about six feet. And we're wanting to install the ultimate improvements along the corridor, put in the curb and the sidewalk all the way from Amazon to Garner Road. We don't want to install any of that infrastructure down to the intersection, put in these signal poles, and then when we come back with Phase Two, have to come in and possibly rip out curb and sidewalk again because then we're raising up the intersection. So that's the reason for why we changed to, to build the intersection completely at the start. We only do it one time. The, the right-of-way acquisition, we're basically doing only along Phase One. And then you've probably got another seven or eight, nine tracks, mostly two owners, but multiple parcels along that Phase Two alignment. And all of that acquisition would fall into the later Phase Two part project. So there's not a lot of, in my, in my mind, out of the, the numbers that you're seeing up here representing the four to five million, the amount of work and dollar figures for the environmental and the 15% design that we sort of need to do for the design work to make sure that the entire project to get over the railroad, that it will come together nicely. And then environmentally, a lot of times, that's a requirement to look at an entire corridor to where you're going to be your ultimate terminus, which is US 70, as, as one entire holistic project. So I, I don't think there's, it's being done holistically, and the amount of extra work involved on the design side to add those few items into the scope on the front end is, is a, is a, probably a pretty minor number in the, in the big scheme of things, especially when you think about that second phase, when this all gets constructed, you're probably talking about a $30 million project overall. And, and we're talking probably maybe 50 or 100 extra thousand dollars.
That's sort of my, kind of what my point is, is how much of that is going to change over the course of the construction of Phase One in terms of environmental, other construction and projects that get approved near that corridor? And then you're talking about, right now, it's not a lot of money. I mean, it's a lot of money relative to the amount of this contract, but in a $30 million project, it's actually almost nothing. So I'm just, and I'm interested too, because I've, I've got, I'll warn you all, I have a lot of questions on this contract because there's some inconsistencies as well. On the other big picture side, to step away from the specifics of the contract, the extension of that Phase Two down to 70, have there been, what is the, what is the long-term concept for that intersection? Because what I see is you have Jones Sausage coming to 70, and you've got White Oak over here. What is the idealized traffic flow?
The road will go all the way through there, the Timber Drive.
But that's Phase 16.
Not, not if you get development over there one day, it's not.
Yeah, so one of the reasons we were trying to get an intersection point at Garner Road established and at Highway 70 was there's development pressure, and you've already seen a long change corridor and then all the development potential between 70 and Timber. And, and so there's a chance that the private development community may build part, if not all, of the connection between Timber and 70 and get it there so that when, when we are able to degrade separation, we've controlled where that extension went.
But in that, in that, they're going way off far afield, but I don't even, I've seen this, so that you've got White Oak, you've got Jones Sausage. For years, you're going to have Jones Sausage terminate on 70, and you're going to have White Oak right over here. And you're going to have traffic trying to come up White Oak to go this weird jog up Jones Sausage Road, over this bridge to get onto 40 or go this way onto 40. It's not a straight shot. Even if that road would continue all the way through that property down to Timber Drive, you're running the same issue where you don't have these roads aligned, and you've got people trying to cross sideways across and sideways down across Highway 70 to go north-south. Does that make, you understand what I'm saying? Like, you don't have a free flow, you're not creating a free flow of traffic north-south with this project. And that's what you want in a city, in a town, is you want a free flow of traffic, you have major arteries to be connected north-south.
I think that was our goal all along, so I'm not sure we, I might be missing part of your question, but I think our, our goal all along was, was to make sure that was a corridor that, that had a full function intersection at 70 and a full function intersection at Timber.
But it doesn't, and I'm telling you, that doesn't make any sense.
Okay.
Because you've got a major artery, White Oak Road, parallel less than a quarter mile from what you're now trying to create is another major corridor. So when you can't bring that all the way down to Timber, you're going to have another major four-lane intersection with Timber and Jones Sausage, and then less than a quarter mile, you're going to have White Oak Road. So what is your traffic pattern going to, you're, you're crisscrossing major intersect, major highways, major roads with two north-south arteries that you're wanting to build capacity on.
And remember, the White Oak is going to start basically at 70 because when we close the crossing...
Just having the retail come out of there, this is not the, the full movement. So you got to, the traffic reduction at that intersection, that movement is going to be dramatic.
All this development on, on White Oak that's happening, it's going north, it's trying to get to White Oak Shopping Center, it's trying to get to 40. There's still going to be this pressure from people getting off on Jones Sausage to come down and then go down White Oak. And so now you've got this jog here.
Remember, 40 is a four-lane ride. Remember, it changes everything. When they come down White Oak, they're not, they're not going to get on Jones Sausage, they're going to zip down there and go that way. That's the whole reason. You've got to remember, White Oak is parallel to 40, don't you?
I know, but you, this is what I'm saying. Now you've got the major, you've got 70 as a highway, major traffic east-west, which that's not going to change because they're trying to get to 42. Now you've got these two bifurcated north-south arteries you're trying to create. And for the longest time, which are going to have, is traffic coming up White Oak or coming down Jones Sausage, trying to get to White Oak and Jones Sausage. Because people are going to get off 40, they're going to get off Jones Sausage, they're going to stop, turn left onto White Oak, and left onto 70, and then right back onto White Oak. That's a traffic nightmare.
That's wild.
It, it's too close.
It's a four-lane divided median road, the major intersection.
You, you've got two of those within a quarter of a mile of each other. Less than, less than probably a quarter of a mile. You're going to have two ma, you're adding another White Oak intersection, White Oak 70 intersection, less than a quarter mile from the existing one.
You're eliminating a deadly railroad intersection that cannot be fixed as it is. They want that curve and that intersection closed, period. I mean, that's the recommendation anyway.
I understand it.
So we have to somehow straighten this out. And having seen numerous footprints of that quadrant, of the southwest quadrant of that property, and how it's evolved from a mall to this to that, to who knows what it's going to be now, that is a major hub for office and retail and business and multifamily. That is a major, that's, that's a hu, a huge piece of property that you could have retail on the bottom and multiple stories of, of multifamily or townhouses or condos or whatever. It's a huge development track. And if you're taking a two-lane or a four-lane divided median road through that, that's, you know...
That's what it's there for. I mean, the, the long time goal one day, years ago, was to take Jones Sausage all the way through there and go through where Hillendale lives and tie it to White Oak. That was the loop that I had talked about decades ago, but that won't ever happen now. But that was what was talked about at one time.
Can, can I suggest, we, we could carry this on for a while, and perhaps we need to for a little bit, but can I suggest we put aside these, 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 these arguments right now and perhaps ask Jeff to, 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 to seek to answer, I guess, the inquiries here and bring this back at our work session where maybe we have more, we can have more time if we want to have this, this particular type conversation. I mean, I don't think the council needs to be designing roads at this point, and I'm not suggesting you're doing that, but it seems to me that we're, we're going a little bit of field from the intent of this particular hearing this evening. So if we circle all the way back to that, the ultimate question before us, I guess, was to determine if the, if the council wanted to authorize the town manager to execute a design contract. Is that right?
Yes, yeah. So we wanted to present the different approaches, be able to have that conversation with you all, and allow you to decide what is better aligned with the town's priorities. And, you know, assuming that a decision was made tonight then to authorize the town manager to execute the contract. But if we require more time to work through the details of the contract, we can figure that out.
Yeah. I mean, that's what I propose, Mr. Dillinger and Mr. Singleton. I appreciate your, your perspectives and your comments, but I think that could go on for quite a while.
I think it'd be more appropriate to move it to the work session because we do have other things to consider this evening. And some things have presented themselves that we weren't expecting as far as the details of this particular item. And we don't want to, we want, we want to get it correct and not make mistakes because we're hurrying through.
Okay with that? All right. Okay, I guess we are finished at this point, is that right?
Can I ask a question? So if we, so if we bring it to a work session, can we make, can we get specifically, specifically what the reduction would be on if the town, if we do non-LAP funding specifically, what the contract reduction would be? And the scope of the contract will be rewritten? Can we, can we have that to see? Because if we're going to sit here and vote on it and authorize the manager to do it, and we don't know what it's going to be, the scope of the contract also changes.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we can have the consultant prepare that. We just, at this juncture, we were trying to gauge if town council had an idea of what direction they'd want to go in before having consultant, the consultant develop the, the revised scope and fee.
Well, you might ask us, you ask us all if we, and again, this is a multi-million-dollar decision, so I don't expect us all to say, yeah, I agree 100% with that. But, you know, right now, I would lean toward non-LAP because we can control when it gets done. As Ms. Behringer said, this, this, the pressure on this road in this area is going to be tremendous. I mean, when that thing gets finished here in the next few weeks, we think.
Councilman Singleton, did you say non-LAP?
Yes, non-LAP. We can, we can control when it gets done.
If we stay on this course, and it roughly would start in June of '22, a build-out would be, what, about a year? 12 months?
At least, maybe a year.
Okay.
Depending on what time of year it's, it's...
Okay.
Right-of-way acquisitions will be longer on this project than we're accustomed to.
So, but if it did get started... So, but if it did get started in June of twenty-two, that's, that's January twenty-four, and that's if everything's perfect. The other one may not even have LAP funding in nine-twenty-three, or six-twenty-three, or nine-twenty-nine, for all we know, so we can't, at least the town controls it. Yes, it costs more money, but the town controls when the project can be done. I think we all agree that Phase Two costing tens of millions of dollars is not a town project.
I concur in the non-LAP, or the non-LAP direction. I think that's the smarter way to go, but I do think there are three pages of details in that contract that I have issues with or need to be addressed, and so I think I was better suited for a work session to go through those details.
Is that anything you want to send to us, just so we can...
Session. I mean, and it might be helpful to have the consultant here to answer some of those questions on a million-dollar contract.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have a question. Mr. Mayor, I have a question in reference to what we just witnessed here, pertaining to the LAP funding, that we were initially on the track for going, proceeding on that path, but now we made the adjustment to thinking of non-LAP because of the current funding situation with DOT. We, we understand that piece. And in that process, we're saying we'll start at a certain time. We have a, a date. Is that the date to start right-of-way? Or is it date to start construction?
To start construction.
Start construction, so right-of-way needs to be pushed back a few years.
The timeline includes, there's two timelines in the packet there, and the one without LAP funding does show when we could start the right-of-way acquisition.
The right-of-way process.
They've, they've included that, the steps for right-of-way, in both of those timelines.
And the anticipated time for that, knowing that we have a number of impacts there?
I, without looking at the timeline, but it's, it's... I think, I think both Gabby and the engineer vetted that they felt like the appropriate amount of time was being considered in the ti, overall timeline.
Okay, and going back to, just, just, just a point of clarification for me, and going, going, going back to the, the previous discussion, we referenced stopping it at the Phase One point, at, from where it is, at Amazon, and stopping it at the intersection of Jones Sausage Road and Old Gonna Road. The environmental study, what type document is gonna be? Do, do we have an idea? What type of environmental document?
Expecting a CE.
Expecting a CE, okay. Which will, which will require Fed approval, permitting process, things of that nature? Okay, all right, so from my understanding of the process, it's gonna have to study not only Phase One, but also Phase Two because of logical termini. You have a logical termini with, at, at, at the Amazon site, logical termini at the other point for, for seventy. So you have to include the whole process in part of environmental process, in, in, in order for the study to be approved by the, the Fed, the Fed's court, whoever has to approve the, the document, so, so that you can move forward.
Right.
There, there's no way you can piecemeal that, or be allowed to piecemeal that because of the other entities that are involved with the process?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and that, that's why we had them assume that they would be completing that for the north and the south.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right, I'm clear. Yes, sir, I'm clear.
Thank you, thank you. Feel anything?
No. I agree with the non-fun, I mean, the...
Non-LAP.
Yeah.
Is, is what I'm hearing most. But let's see, we're gonna bring this back to the, to the work session.
Mm-hmm. And we will, we'll ask the consultant to update the, the, the scope and the fee and all the appropriate materials to reflect that, so that we can continue to have this conversation at that time.
Okay, all right.
John?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, I know that our agenda material's, the deadline for the, the work session's tomorrow, so I don't think we'd be able to get the, the type of information we may need back in time to get it to council, so it may be that we have to look at calendaring this a little after the work session, but just at the next, would it be okay to do it at the next available time, that we can have all the appropriate information? Because I, I don't know that we can turn the, the information by tomorrow for this next work session.
I mean, that seems like a reasonable request to me.
So you mean like the first, possibly at the end of the first meeting in September, or has that got a lot of, a lot of development projects on it that, that we don't wanna do that?
We've got a couple of development projects on the first meeting in September, but we also have a, some, a, a longer session planned for the work session, that's your joint session with Planning Commission, is coming up at this work session, so there's, there's something that's fairly time, you know, takes some time on the work session, when, we can add it whenever. I just want to make sure that we can get the right information that council wants to see this time, and make sure we can get it back from the consultants to, to get it to you.
So potentially one of the, one of the two meetings in September?
Yes, sir.
As long as you've got the information, as long as the consultant comes to the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. That's what we will, that's what we'll point towards then, okay. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Law. Appreciate your time. Okay, council, I'm ready to proceed on. Does anybody need, I know we ordinarily would try to take a quick break around nine o'clock, we're already past that time.
Go ahead, finish the reports and then take a break before the closed session.
Everybody okay with that? So we're at, are there any committee reports at this time?
We do not have a committee report on, on the personnel committee, we do not, but we will be meeting in, in, in the near future to discuss filling vacancies in, for various committees.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. I guess it would be considered a committee report, the, the subcommittee that was appointed to, to look at applications for our new position of a town attorney, and receive those applications and do initial and preliminary screening, that process is underway. I think at this point, the, the, the committee would recommend to this council that we continue the process and bring to the council, for your interview and final approval, perhaps the, I believe, the top three candidates that we would recommend to you. And so I wanted to bring that to you as a, as a recommendation from that committee. Matt, I guess I'd have to confirm the timeframe on that, but we, we still have obviously some preliminary work to do, but does council have any particular reaction as it relates to that being the, the, the final part of the process and bringing those number of applicants to, to the full council for final decisions?
My only comment would be, don't, don't force three if it, you know, if there are four or five.
Sure.
I would be comfortable with reviewing a few more if it's, there's some close candidates.
Okay, so you're saying if the committee feels like we oughta, you know, not cut it off at three. Anybody else have a comment on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
On the, we'll, once you streamline this down, say if it's three, or five, or whatever that, that number is, that will be under final consideration, is that something where the council get to do an interview process with all of them, or what's your game plan on that?
The former idea, I think, is, is plan, obviously, the, the council selects the town attorney, and so we would, we would anticipate a process of some type of interview, and of course, providing information that we, that we have accrued about those candidates. But we, we can talk about the specific logistics of that, but, but I would anticipate that, yeah, all council members would have an opportunity to participate in that.
Okay.
Through, through an interview process.
Thank you, sir, okay.
Is that consistent, I believe, with what we've discussed, I think, in our, in our deliberations thus far?
Yes, there would be some other interviews that would be done in advance to narrow the field, but then the, the full council would participate in a, you know, a traditional interview process with each of the finalists, say, three, or whatever the number ends up being.
Okay, yeah, okay. So I would consider that, I guess, a, a committee report, so let's, let's hear from the manager.
Yeah, you have Garner info. Any questions about that? Report. Continue to work on those items. The building and permit report, you can see the number, talks about how many single-family permits we've gotten over the last month or so. Inspections continue to be busy, we got, we had twenty-three new buildings permitted, twelve townhomes, and then some smaller items, and then you can see a lot of additions and things like that, but building continues to be pretty steady here in Garner. The item number three, the Raleigh Tryon project, that's been the topic of discussion over the last month and, month or two. I know some concerns by residents in Cloverdale over a proposed rezoning. Right now, it is planned as a rezoning, right now, at the end of Tryon, and there's some, I guess, some insinuations that that project, potential project that's built there could connect into Cloverdale through Northview Street or either Randall Street, and the residents of Cloverdale do not desire that connectivity to happen. They voice some concerns on connectivity, the stream that crosses through the property, wildlife, and tree preservation. That is in Raleigh's planning jurisdiction, so not sure how much input we'll have, we'll have input, the residents will certainly have input, and we've told them to be active in any meetings or feedback sessions. The town can possibly weigh in on some of these items. However, you know, the stream, which will be dictated by the water quality folks and the wildlife, you know, as much as I'd like to say the wildlife and the trees and the forestation that they've enjoyed, you know, it is developable property, so I'm not sure the town has the power and authority to do anything about that, to prohibit development. We can make sure, you know, hopefully that there's no impacts to any adjoining town properties. So talking about the connectivity of the streets, you know, planning's been keeping up on this topic, and it is pretty much a basic premise of planning in the UDO, and over the years, we've promoted through our planning department and development connectivity. So don't think, you know, it's feasible to ask the planning professionals to go against that at this time. However, if the council as a group or through the administration department, you know, wants, want to advocate that the roads not be connected, I mean, we can certainly do that, and, you know, send Raleigh some documentation that our wishes are that it not connect. The other things we can do is the fact that at the end of Northview and the end of Randall, you know, that, that is town right-of-way. We can restrict access to that, they, there's two ways we can do that. One is they would have to get a permit to connect to town right-of-way, town street, so we could deny that connectivity. The other thing is we could put up a barricade that would prevent any future connectivity. So those are two options. You know, connectivity is something that we think is important, you know, as a premise, as a principle, it could provide some relief for the residents to go out on the Tryon Road, but they prefer not to have that. I think they're looking at it basically from the future development coming into their neighborhood, or cutting through the neighborhood. So we can, we can advocate on their behalf that as a town, that we prefer not to see that. I would say that we have not, I don't think we've seen a development plan for that property yet. Right now, it's, like I said, it's just a rezoning in order to get likely multifamily on the property, so.
Interject that I went to the neighborhood meeting that the developer held, as a participant over Zoom. There were twenty-five to thirty attendees, most of those were Cloverdale folks, and the developer, represented by an attorney, sort of reiterated the assumption that there would be that connectivity, and that, and again, they didn't have a development plan submitted to Raleigh.
Right.
But there was sort of this understanding that whatever their development plan was gonna be, Raleigh would require southern access, and I think they were operating under the assumption, they didn't really need to pay attention to, to people in Cloverdale, because they could connect that road. My, I'm in favor of, of barricading it, I think that is, can always be removed, can always have that negotiation, but I think it reassures the citizens that we're serious about it. The problem with the connectivity, too, I think Gray's mentioned several times, those are narrow streets that were never expected to be connected, there are no sidewalks. Who's gonna pay for the improvements in, on those roads? That's our burden, we, we assume the burden of that increased traffic, because we gotta fix the road, we're not getting any tax benefit out of there, and if somebody, they, they also select ways and all these other things, they're trying to route people, the different shortcut-throughs, you don't need any more traffic trying to turn out onto Garner Road off of Northview, that's a dangerous intersection as it is with that hill.
More than likely, yeah, the traffic would go to Tryon and use the light to get on Garner to avoid long lines.
But what happens, that connecting road, if it's Northview, it connects up to, I think it's Id-Ida Wild, I think, would be the end-up connecting road, and it's a pretty major road, and it would end up being this sort of, I'll just kinda cut through or go through here. I, I mean, the, the developer's perspective was it's not gonna increase cut-throughs, that's what they said, if I had to done increased cut-throughs, you're opening the road up. But I, I've heard from many residents out there, and they're very concerned, especially with the limited power that they would have going before council in Raleigh, or their planning commission, so that, that's my two cents.
You know, Mr. Mayor, if I could comment? I rode out that way and checked it through Cloverdale, and I went down Tryon Road and came in that back way and looked, checked that out last week, and the type of housing and everything that Raleigh's got is totally different from what we've got in Cloverdale. The people in Cloverdale, it's an older neighborhood, they like the, a lot of seniors in there, they like the tranquility and quietness of that neighborhood, and I don't think Raleigh can force us to stub into that neighborhood, because it would destroy all, and those people are retired, those homes are paid for, and it's two different lifestyles, and, and if I was living in there, I would not want that stub open up either, because there's a lot comes with it. And, and like I said, I've rode the other side of it and looked, and I would support those neighbors, and if it's a way we could barricade that, I can't say where Raleigh can force us to do a, a stub open to them. Am I correct on that assumption, Mr. Attorney?
I do not know, I've been sitting here thinking about it, and I'm writing an email to the school of government.
You can do that, chief.
That's it. Now, will, will the Raleigh, will this part of the street, when it is developed and the street is built, will that be a Raleigh street?
Likely, I don't know what, I don't know if that would be a private street or a Raleigh street. It depends on how it's developed. Of course, Tryon would stay Raleigh Street, and some of that would be extended, but then the adjoining street, I'm not sure.
Smaller connecting streets.
Yeah, not sure.
If it's, if it's a private street, it's much more likely we could barricade it. But if you've got two public streets with a barricade in the middle of, of one of them, or at the end of one of them, I, I don't know if that could stand forever. I, I just don't know.
But can Raleigh force us to connect to them?
Well, the connection is just de facto when the pavement is laid and the streets are there, and Raleigh will put up a stop sign or whatever.
I, I don't think the road goes all the way to the property line, I think it goes r-close. It doesn't, Jeff's saying it doesn't go all the way.
It is close, yeah. If Jeff is on, if you want...
I'm setting a head nod on my screen here.
Which, which road doesn't go all the way to the property line? Ours or the new developer?
Yeah, the two in Garner. If, if the, if the plat from the sixties is correct, both of those cul-de-sacs stop just short of the property line. There's probably about a five-foot gap or so.
So it's owned by homeowners association or one of the lots?
No, the, it, it is right-of-way, I believe, but the actual, the actual pavement, and it is enclosed by, by curb, that stops short of the property line.
It's worth a try, is all I can tell you.
I'd like to recommend that we begin by...
I'd like to recommend that we begin by, you know, advocating for them not cutting through and then proceed with more serious stringent whatever actions if they don't listen to us. I'd also like to just throw out for thought that when the villages, yeah, the villages at Abersburg were built, there was a connector between, I believe it's Mary, not Mary Kirk, but a street into Heather Woods. And there was a lot of discontent about that being connected because it was going to be a raceway and so forth and so on. And it has not been. It's a connector, but it's not a heavily traveled one. So there's always that possibility. But I think we would be better served to begin by advocating for them not connecting it and then proceed as we see how the city of Raleigh reacts to us.
Another thing I thought of is to close that five feet of right-of-way, abandon it, which means the ownership to the center line would go to the two adjoining property owners, which means Raleigh would have to acquire that for it to become part of their street network. And they can't condemn outside the corporate limits for a street. I'd have to think through all these things.
The owners could sell it to them at the rate.
Well.
And we'd have no control.
I agree with you, Ms. Behringer. Begin by expressing our opposition, and then as the development becomes clearer as to what they intend, our actions could.
Right. We can show good faith, knowing that we may have to show something more in good faith, but it bodes well for us in the long run, as far as a community partner, to be civilized about it to begin with.
I think we must remember that Cloverdale was built, started over 55 years ago. It was out there, there was nothing out there. There was no Tryon Road. You had the SBI buildings to go to the mortgage school. There was no ABC warehouse. There was nothing out there. And if this was, if Cloverdale was built 10, 15, 20 years ago, and they knew stub-outs were coming, that's a different story. We're talking something that's almost 60 years old. This is not, Ms. Behringer mentioned the village in Heather Woods, and there was opposition, but that was a little different because it was newer. But there was also a connection from the village to Van Story Hills, and we didn't make them do that one. Just like we also turned down the connection from South Wade to Park Avenue and Edgbrook Drive to South Wade, and also the connection from Heather Springs into Edgbrook through two houses. There was a lot there that we denied, didn't make them connect. Because Edgbrook had been built in the 60s, and Heather Springs was built 35 years later, 30 years later, whatever it was. And we didn't make them connect that. So now, they were all into town of Garner. Didn't involve Raleigh, of course. But anyway, Cloverdale has been there for, as I say, almost 60 years. And the idea of stub-outs there, and of course, if you go to Northview, I mean, it's a cul-de-sac, it's a curbing gutter. You don't think you're going to have a street. It doesn't look like a typical stub-out that just stubs out into the woods. It's a curbing gutter. And so I've delivered meals on Northview for years, meals on wheels. So anyway, Ms. Behringer's right, just try to be nice, but I don't see the benefit. There's enough cut-through traffic on Meadowbrook in case and as it is. We don't need additional cut-through. We've already got speed, not impediments, what's the word? Help me out here.
Traffic calming.
Traffic control, whatever. Traffic calming, which we need to convert from the ones to the pavement. But anyway, we'll work on that. But we already got enough cut-through issues in Cloverdale as it is. We don't need to add to it.
We're in first, and then get rough after that.
In the meantime, we'll see what the school of government has to say.
Okay. Can we move along, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
I was going to say, let's just look after these people. And having driven over there, like I said, you got, like Grace said, I know the lady that lives on that last house go to church with her. She's in her 90s, and they've lived there all their life. And it's like a circle right there. Then there's the woods, and there's the hill. And it's obvious it's two different areas. And the two communities do not match up whatsoever. And as Grace said, you know, there's many years' history behind Cloverdale. And we need to stand up for those people. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Didn't mean to throw a loop on you there.
Well, I anticipated it. I just didn't know the answer with confidence.
I'm back to the town attorney.
All right. The last item is just an update on the Garner Road sidewalk project. If you can remember, part of that project was putting in storm drainage and then pouring sidewalk. And then there's a section near the dog park where there's still going to be a ditch. And I think through some previous conversations, we didn't think we could pipe that section. But now I think we're working out something with DOT. So is Chris going to give us more details on that?
So is that ditch going to not be so deep like it is now? Because that's dangerous.
We're going to try to get rid of it.
Okay, good. Wonderful.
We came to council a couple of years ago during design to tell you that DOT would not let us take a large pipe to the smaller pipe that was in front of the senior center and goes on the railroad tracks. Once the project was actually in development and Mr. Johnson was on board when he saw the resulting steep ditch that was there by design, but it was steeper, you know, than expected, he went back to our consultants as well as DOT and has worked with them pretty extensively to help them understand that he thought there was a reasonable fix there. So he's got an approval to do that. He'll walk you through that. But since we had come to you and asked for an exception before, we wanted to come back and ask you, tell you about this. And then he needs some direction to move forward with a change order to the project. One additional benefit that I'll mention that came out just today at a meeting we were having with Raleigh. Raleigh has secured funding through the Wake Transit Plan to add bus stations and bus stop amenities to a number of routes, including the route that serves Garner. And so we went through lots of locations today, and there was one stop proposed to be just on the edge of Chadwick's property, which is just off of our property. If we are able to make this ditch close in and the widening there, we can actually move that bus stop over to our property, which will eliminate the need for some private encroachment and permanent easement, and also get it a few feet closer to the senior center. So that was an unexpected benefit we were going to get out of that that just came about today. So that I'll turn over to Chris to give you the details.
Sure. So just again, I'm sure y'all probably all know what we're talking about. But the original project for New Rand and Garner Road, we got New Rand Road over here stubbing into 70 at the railroad crossing. And we were already installing curb and sidewalk, and they've actually just finished it this week, paving up to the end of where Chadwick Apartments is. And then there's this one little gap in front of the dog park that has not got curb and gutter. And, but after that, when we get to the senior center, there is curb and gutter that goes for the next mile, all the way down through downtown to, I believe, Purdue Street. And so in talking back, once we saw the result out there, the ditch was deeper and steeper than what was in the design. And that may have just been a slight difference in field conditions versus the survey. Don't know exactly the reason, but the grades of the pipe were correct and tied into the ditch line. And so we went back to figure out, since this did precede my time with the town, and there had been discussions between Tony Chalk and Kimley Horn during the design phase. And what I came to find out was that there was the issue because there's a receiving 18-inch pipe that starts here at the senior center and runs down along Creech. And then eventually, it dumps out where the railroad is and goes under the railroad. And what we've got here is a proposed 24-inch pipe. And I mean, in ideal circumstances, you typically don't want to tie a pipe to a smaller pipe system downstream. That's a basic thing. But obviously, when you're upgrading older, outdated infrastructure, that is a very common occurrence that you see that and run into that from time to time. What we did is we ran back and ran the hydraulics. There's only a .1 cubic feet per second increase in runoff by adding this curb along this frontage. The sidewalk is already there, so we're not doing a lot of pavement widening. You're talking about like a foot or two of pavement at tops and adding in the strip of curb. So a lot of it's already impervious, and this is a small portion of a larger watershed. So yes, we are increasing runoff to the system, but we're already increasing runoff to the system with the existing project. The difference between those two is extremely minimal. And we ran this by the district office. Just one clarifying to what Mr. Hodges said. We haven't gotten final approval on this. We have gotten buy-in from the hydraulics unit at DOT through Kimley Horn's discussions. And we've got to take that discussion forward with the district office to make sure that they are in agreement with everything. But we have much better, I guess, stronger reason, believe that this would be something they may be able to accept versus what we originally proposed to them. So we're hopeful that we can get this added. And it would make sense to go ahead and not have this small gap in what's a mile of curb and gutter on a public facility, and especially given the steep drop-off there right next to a public sidewalk.
Dangerous in a place where you have senior citizens living on top of everything else. That's just not acceptable. So thank you.
Sure. So yeah, this is kind of what's out there today. I just took these today. So they've kind of, this was the original plan where they tied in, and they've seated and put in straw and blankets. And then as you go down, there's the darker, the bigger drop-off. But we're tying into that pipe that you can see right down here at the end. That's our tie point. So what we would be basically doing is just filling in this area to provide a small bit of widening. You see where the curb is here. So there's hardly any curb being added, or any pavement widening being added. You're basically just raising that up, leveling it off with the sidewalk, and it's mostly just going to be a grass strip between the curb and the sidewalk. And then this is looking back the other direction. Yeah, the curb's actually right there on, you might not have hardly any widening at all. It's already right up against the existing pavement.
And then where were the bus?
That's the existing bus stop right now. It's in front of Chadwick, I believe.
Do you go back to where could we move?
So Rodney, what we've asked Raleigh to do today is pending the outcome of tonight. We've told them that if council wants us to move forward this, we'd let them come back and look from the entrance to the park, down to the entrance to the senior center, and look for an appropriate place to site a bus shelter that would be out of the site triangle for both driveways of the senior center and the park. So we can't tell you the exact spot, but they'll come back with a proposed location. It would have been to the east, out of the site triangle, and on Chadwick's property.
Thank you. Thank you.
The ones that are going subbing are all there right now. If you go around the seam and where the existing sidewalk is, they're just adding a slab of concrete behind that and placing the shelter on top of that. So the sidewalk still is the sidewalk. But you can, I mean, you can obviously tell what they're doing. You just go by them, there's several, there's some on rock wire right now they're doing.
There's quite a number of the parts we're getting as a benefit of the transit funding. And some will be the extension, the pads that just gets you to the sidewalk. Some will also include shelters. So once that's vetted, we'll bring that back to share it with everybody. So you'll see it. But it's exciting to be able to get those amenities added through a program that we've been working on for a few years. So is everybody okay with Chris just bringing back a change order for the work at a future, in a future agenda?
Yes.
There, yeah, okay. All right. Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay. Mr. Attorney?
No, thank you.
Okay. Do you want to do council reports and then go to the close session?
Hurry up.
Okay. All right, I'll start here with Mr. Matthews.
I have nothing as time, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Singleton?
I'll pass since we're on a timeline.
Okay. Well, I'll come back to myself. Okay, you don't have, yeah, okay. Mr. Delia?
So if there's a quick update to the stormwater runoff, the Greenbrier situation behind Lowe's, has there been any update on that?
Did we get an update? Did you get an update on that Greenbrier? I think Chris has looked into that and talked to some folks.
I don't have an update right this moment. We did reach out to that owner multiple times. We are waiting for them to get their contract in order. So I'll have to go back and see where that last thread was.
You know, hurricane season's coming up, so progress would be good.
In the midst of it, I think.
Yeah, we're already there.
Is that the one where the ponds?
Another time when you're not concerned for time. But the other realization that Mr. Johnson has had looking into this is that some of the flooding reports we're getting is coming from a different direction in Greenbrier. So he's taking, he and his staff are taking another approach to look at a potential way to try to help improve those things. So you may see a proposal come back. But not all of the issues that we've been getting reports of in Greenbrier can be attributed to that pond. And some of the ones that we've been mentioning previously, we had, was sort of implied that they might all be, but they're not. So you'll see some other proposal coming back in the future for the other half, the eastern part, northeastern part of the neighborhood.
All right, thank you. I'll hold my other.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, sir. A moment.
Okay. Let me mention one item. I don't necessarily need an answer tonight, but the town is ready to send out its calendar, holiday calendar for next year. We usually, I guess, send it out about this time. And a question has arisen regarding whether or not, the town has been following, I guess, the state calendar in terms of holidays. Juneteenth is a holiday that has been discussed in some places, in Wake County and other places as well, as to whether or not, and so this council, I'm saying, will possibly, probably need to weigh in on how we want to handle that, whether or not that could be considered for a holiday. We already know that Wake County has voted to, I think, have that as a holiday time off. I believe the city of Raleigh has done that. And I believe the town of Apex up until now.
Apex, Wake Forest, maybe some others.
Wake Forest has not proved it as a holiday. And so one of the options that has been discussed apparently is rather than necessarily grant a holiday, is talk about ways to recognize that, maybe through educational activities or through other public displays. In some towns, there may be some, I think in Wake Forest, they talked about maybe some group that sort of leads that and maybe has a little march in some areas there. So if you don't, I'll confess, I had limited knowledge about Juneteenth. I've gone and studied that, looked at that. And so I would just ask council to consider that. And maybe by our work session, would like to ask you to weigh in on how we want to handle that moving forward as we develop our calendar and finalize our calendar for next year. Okay. All right. So that's the, let me see, that's the only other report I had, I believe. So we are ready for a close session, am I right?
Yes.
Reese Sam.
Yeah, I was just going to, looking through my emails, I wanted to see if I could, I could give you a better update to the list. So we did respond. We basically gave them a 30 days notice back on July 27th. So we're about halfway. We asked them to get started on that. So that is, we're waiting back for them to start work. And if they do not, then we will move to the town attorney for further action.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so let me see. I will declare a brief recess after we get our site for close session and prepare to adjourn.
The proper motion is I move that the board go into closed session under NC General Statute Section 143-318.11A6 to discuss performance of town employees.
Okay, you want to make that motion?
I make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no other discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposition? No. Okay, we take. Okay, call the council back to order. The council has been in closed session to discuss a personnel matter. And based on that discussion with the town manager, some further action will follow. And I believe that's the conclusion. I will entertain a motion that we adjourn this regular meeting.
So moved.
Okay, motion properly made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your time.